She's back.
Hey. And I see Smirlene is in the attendees, so we have to make her a panelist as well. That would be awesome.
She should be on her way in.
There she is. Awesome. Thank you.
Of course.
Good morning.
Good morning, good morning. Our interpreters are, we're getting ready. Should be ready to go in a minute or two, Lejia.
Okay, perfect.
City. Got to give a round of applause for that. I mean, 25 years we've been pursuing this. So, um, no, seriously, I'm really happy to have you here. And, um, before we get to our featured guest today, uh, we do want to first welcome who has been a mainstay for us for the past several months at the behest of the Malden School Committee, is Rosetta Languages. So they are going to provide today's interpretation. So we have Danielle Najmi from Rosetta, who is going to say a few words. Then I'll come back to introduce our school superintendent. School superintendent will make a presentation. And then most importantly, we want to hear from all of you. Danielle?
Thank you very much, Mayor Gary. Good morning, Malden. Um, I'm Danielle here with the team of interpreters from Rosetta Languages. We have today eight different languages. We have added American Sign Language to our team and we're really happy to have Elizabeth and Luke here, who will be interpreting, um, on the video for, um, anyone who would like to, um, use that service. It's going to be up here in the video. And the rest of us will be on the language channels. Uh, we're going to give instructions in each of the seven spoken languages, um, how to get on the channels now, starting with Arabic. Assalamu alaikum, Sabah al-khair. Alayum a'adana tarjamah bil lugh al-araabiyah. Ifa kunta ala hatif mahmool, fa alaika adzacht ala thalath nukat ala shasha, thumma aqtiyar, uh, language interpretation au tarjamah bil lughat, thumma aqtiyar lugh al-araabiyah au arabic, thumma aqtiyar tam au dan. Uh, ifa kunta ala computer fa alaika an tanzor el asfal al-shasha, wa adzacht ala zerar tarjamah al-kur ar-aziyah, thumma aqtiyar lugh al-araabiyah. Shukran jizilan. I will now pass it to Spanish.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Emiri. Estoy aquí para proveer servicios de interpretación en español. En un momentico vamos a encender la función de interpretación. Entonces, por favor, ubica se al fondo de su pantalla y ahí verá un globito. Click en el iconito y de ahí escoge el, el Spanish. Y si se está conectando tras un móvil, escoge los tres punticos de ahí, as click, escoge interpretation, Spanish, y después done. Si tiene cualquier problema, por favor comunícase tras el chat y le ayudamos a resolver. Muchas gracias. I'll now pass it over to Portuguese.
Bon dia gente, mi nombre es Raissa y a gente va a estar providenciando interpretación en portugués hoy para esta reunión. Daqui un momento, a gente va a ligar la función de interpretación. Si usted estima participando a través de un computador, usted va a ver un globo en la parte de abajo de su pantalla. Por favor, clicke nesse globo, aí escolhe portugués, depois escolhe finalizado ou done. Se você tiver participando de um telefone celular, você vai ver três pontinhos na parte de baixo da sua tela, e de novo escolhe português, depois finalizado ou done. Se você tiver qualquer dúvida, por favor comunique através do chat. Brigada. I will now pass it to Haitian Creole.
Bonsoir tout le monde. Bonjour tout le monde. Non, moi c'est Smirlene. Et moi pour interpréter en Creole pour assouer à, il faut à nous activer l'interprétation. Cliquez sur type globe là, ou qui dans téléphone moi, et puis choisis l'anglais qui c'est Creole haïtien, pour tander en Creole. Et si vous avez un smartphone ou bien un bon téléphone non mais où, cliquez sur trois types points, ou point trois types points à écran, et puis laissez ça. Ou appeler cliquer interprétation langue, ou appeler dit language interpretation sur téléphone en anglais. Et puis, ou appeler cliquer Haitian Creole ou bien Creole haïtien. Et puis, ou appeler ça. Si vous avez besoin de questions, si vous avez ou bien question que tu aimer nous aider avec, appeler aider au chat là où m'a écrit. Après ça, nous pourra passer la, nous pourra passer l'anglais par Vietnamese. We're passing it on to Vietnamese.
Good morning. My name is Lin, the Vietnamese interpreter. Xin chao, quý vị. Tên tôi là Lin, tôi là người thông Việt quen đến Việt của Rosetta Languages cho quý vị hôm nay. Một khi chúng tôi đã kết hoạt tính năng phiên dịch, xin vui lòng bấm vào biểu tượng quả điều cầu trên màn hình và chọn ngôn ngữ là tiếng Việt, Vietnamese, để được nghe phiên dịch trực tiếp. Nếu quý vị đang dùng điện thoại thông minh và smartphone, xin bấm vào ba dấu chấm, rồi sau đó chọn ngôn ngữ phiên dịch tức là language interpretation. Sau đó chọn tiếng Việt, Vietnamese. Sau đó chỉ quý vị bấm chữ đanh là xong. Xin cảm ơn quý vị. Thank you. Now I pass it on to Terry Mandarin.
Thank you. Uh, hi, my name is Terry. I'll be your Mandarin interpreter. 大家好，我叫Terry，我是你们的国语翻译。待会你在屏幕下方呢，你就会看到一个地球的图标，点地球仪的图标，选择Mandarin就可以进入到国语的频道了。如果你是用手机或者是平板电脑上的话呢，你可以选择屏幕下方的三个点，然后再选择语言的选项，也可以进入到国语的频道。好，谢谢大家。Thank you. I pass it to Anna Cantonese, please.
Thank you, Terry. Good morning, everyone. I'm Anna. I'm your Cantonese interpreter for the meeting today.
Thank you, Anna. Um, so we can go ahead and activate the interpretation. Interpreters, make sure that your microphone is on, that you are not on mute. And host, when you're ready, you can put us on the channels. Thank you.
Interpretation is live. Okay, Danielle. Shukran masalama. My favorite part of the get-togethers that we now have. A couple of housekeeping details. Uh, bathrooms are to my right, to your left, uh, right over here. We also want to take a moment to welcome members of our school committee. We have from Ward Three, Jen Sbatte four. Thank you for being here, Jen. We also have from Ward Seven, Michelle Luong. Thank you, Michelle. And we also have Rob McCarthy from Ward Two. And on double duty, we have our Ward Five School Committee Representative Adam Waldy, who is also helping us organize today's meeting. Uh, we also want to make sure we acknowledge the president of the Malden Education Association, Deb Jezwaldo. Deb, thank you for being here. And, uh, finally, as you probably have seen coming in, we do have the brand new Malden Public Schools food truck, which today we are offering water and ice creams. You don't have to worry about me doing anything with the food, which is what I'm always asked when I'm on the truck. So, uh, please take your time to make yourself, you know, the opportunity to grab something from our food truck. And finally, I want to offer you all a tour after this meeting of our new city hall. So I will be, uh, giving those once this session ends. But, uh, without further ado, I just want to introduce our new school superintendent, Lejia Noriega Murphy. And I think the best way to describe her is the school committee had selected her as our new school superintendent back in the spring with a contract start date of July first. Now, my experience in the past is typically that's a hot date. When the contract starts is when the person starts, uh, but that has not been the case with Lejia. I have been meeting with her since, uh, the night that we voted and have been doing so right along up until today. And I think the one thing that you'll find very impressive that I have is very, very, very data-driven. And that is something that we have been crying out for over the years. Not only because of what it means to us in this room, but also because of what it means to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. As you, as you probably know, a lot of our funding derives from data. And so, uh, the new school superintendent has taken it upon herself to make that one of the top issues as she begins her tenure with us. So without further ado, uh, please, a round of applause for our new school superintendent, Lejia Noriega Murphy.
Thank you. Gracias. And good morning, everybody. Uh, it's totally a pleasure to be here. And, uh, once again, I think that my husband called it. I had to say that, so my husband's here and I want to acknowledge him, uh, Eddie Murphy. And, uh, when we were going through the process of the interviews, he said, Lejia, we feel, I feel my heart that this is the place where you want to be at. The same thing with my mother, who's not here today. She's not feeling well. And, but I want to acknowledge my family, uh, my brother and my niece. Thank you for being here. At the same time, uh, teachers, who I just met, school leaders, thank you for being here. And, uh, my amazing central office staff, if you can just stand, please, because you are, have been leading this work for many years. So thank you. I want to acknowledge. Thank you. And we had two principals in here today, uh, Ms. Murphy and Ms. Lauren. So thank you so much for your support. Yes, thank you. Uh, so I just want to say that it's a pleasure, uh, to be here. And one thing that I have, it's a hard time for me just to stand. I move. So it's very hard for me to just be here. And people who are there at home, thank you for, uh, joining us today. Uh, so the work has been outstanding. Uh, the families, teachers, parents, uh, city councilors, uh, school committee members, uh, mayor, you have been so amazing. I welcome in here. So I feel like I'm proud already of Malden. I am here. So for 10 years, I said to people, so please, uh, my child, yes. Uh, one of the things that I want to do, I, we do have a PowerPoint presentation because I want to guide the conversation with something. And then after that, we will open it for, uh, questions. So one of the things that I want to, uh, do is, uh, want to make sure that we keep the students at the center of the work. To me, students are the center of my heart. This has been a passion, uh, to educate students, to work with families, because I want to make sure that every single student is going to have an opportunity to be successful. Long time ago, when I just started my career as a principal, a guidance counselor came to my office and said, there are two things that you can do. One is never feel sorry for students. Educate them. Because if you don't prepare them for life, it's a disservice to them. And that has been my mantra, is we will provide wraparound services for students, for families. But at the end of the day, is my moral duty to make sure that every single student is going to be ready for college and career. Because otherwise, we won't be able to change our future. I also, uh, frame my work, and I know it's hard to read a deal, um, with frameworks. Students, teachers, because if we don't love our teachers, we don't take care of our teachers, many things cannot happen in the classroom. We also have to take care of them. Make sure that the classrooms are the right place for them, making sure they have the curriculum, the resources that they need, and the support and professional development. Students, of course, the center of the work, and then the content. And truly appreciate the work that, uh, the directors who are here have been working, doing in Malden. Because they have been leading the instructional component. Once again, my focus is the students, but also the instructional core. I want to make sure we focus back in instruction, what's going on in the classrooms, in order to make sure our students are going to be successful. I do believe in creating a theory of change, or I cannot change anything because I, I'm getting to know what needs to be changed. The other one is strategies. I like to think about how everything that surrounds the students works to support the students. So you are going to constantly see this frame in my agendas and also conversations with students. And there is, how do we create the culture of the schools together? Then what, who are the stakeholders? What's the impact they're going to have on a student's growth? What resources we have? And what is going to be the, uh, systems we are going to build? We are also looking at something that is missing in here, the lens of equity. We want to make sure that all our students, every single one of them, is going to be, is going to be able to have a voice and be able to be educated. Data, yes. Data drives everything here. Because how do we know that what we are doing is actually going to have an impact on students' lives? If we don't measure things, then we don't know if we are being successful or not. So far, I am still in my, uh, learning mode. Uh, tomorrow is going to be one month since I started here as a superintendent. And the conversations I'm having with people, and it has been in different ways. People have come to the office, someone's gone to the, um, schools, uh, emails, text messages, uh, my phone number. I have two phones, but my personal phone is the one that people are using, and I don't mind because this work is what I really want. It's my career, it's my life. Uh, people have been sharing things about instructional core. What is the curriculum that we have? Can we engage and continue the conversations about vertical horizontal alignment? Why is the curriculum that we are going to continue using at ELC? Or do we need to revamp it? And so we are engaging in conversations and we are going to engage in conversations with principals. So far, I have been able to meet multiple times with the principals individually, now as a group. Because I want to make sure that their voices are going to be heard. And at the same time, I met with our beautiful and amazing president of the union, because I would like to hear the voices of the teachers and professionals. I cannot move the work alone. It has to be as a community. And in order for us to move it together, we have to listen to each other. We might agree to disagree, but at the same time, I think this is the work of a community. Transparency and communication. And collaboration. Equity. Equity. One more, yeah, one more, one more. I know that usually we said, um, equity is that we had to provide students, every single student with access to something. My lens of equity is actually in the last picture, where we have to remove all those walls that we build that do not allow students to have access to things. And then we, we said, now they need something. We need to make sure that we are going to provide them with access. When we, as a system, sometimes build the walls that don't allow them to have access to a great education, to amazing wraparound services, to have a voice. So when you see this picture, you are going to, uh, hear me multiple times, liberation is the one. We cannot build more walls, more blocks in front of our students' lives or teachers. We have to make sure we remove them. So we are going to be able to have all our students to be educated, to have a voice, and to be part of the community where they actually are going to advocate for themselves. Last Thursday, I had a great opportunity to have lunch with a group of students who were part of the forum, uh, interviewing forum, and I stay with them connected. I just, I, I love just to talk to students and teachers. And they, uh, were able to give me a lot of feedback about their dreams, about their lives, but also about the schools. And one thing that I had to say that I appreciate about them is that they were not talking about themselves. They were talking about their peers. And that is the type of communication and relationship I want to build with every single member of this community. Where you can come, we can talk, and once again, we can agree to disagree. But at the same time, your voices are going to guide my thinking, our thinking, and our strategy. So it has been amazing to just engage in conversations with students, with families. And families from different spectres. The ones that have access to things, the ones that would like to have access by financial means, I don't allow them to do that. And families that language and culture do not allow them to access things because they themselves feel that they don't have the voice. So I want to make sure that as a district and as a city, and we are working closely together, as, uh, Mayor Christensen said, every Wednesday we meet. And we talk about how do we see the district as the part of the community, the heart of the community, because we have our babies in there, our students. And we are able to come up with strategies on how we are going to open the district in a way that people can feel that we can talk and we can find solutions to things. This is the, uh, definition that I have with, well, actually don't have. I, it is from, uh, one of the institutes that I read a lot of those, uh, research documents. And it's when we look at our personal equity. And that's when we look at the stereotypes that exist in our community, the biases that we have created. We had to talk about that. And we will engage in those conversations. Institutional equity, when I say we sometimes build the walls, and then we want to find solutions for students to jump over things, obstacles, when we already built those obstacles for them. So we want to make sure that we are going, when we make decisions, it's going to be center what students need and what can we provide. The other one is professional equity. So you are going to be able to, uh, engage in conversations like this very soon, where we open some forums at the district level and in different parts of the community. Um, I know people are ready and questions will come about how we're getting ready for the schools. Actually, before, uh, as soon as I turned up the phone after the job offer, I, I talked to my husband, I said, oh my goodness, how, what is going to look like September first, when, twenty-two COVID? Our country has gone through so many changes, so many things that have hurt families in different ways. So it is my moral responsibility to be able to listen to families and to open the schools the best way that we can. We, our students need to be in school. It's how we are going to do it. So I already invited our amazing president from the teachers' union, our nurses, and also people from City Hall to start thinking about how we are going to do it in the best way possible. And going back to communication transparency, what information parents need to know now to get ready for school? What information teachers need in order to feel comfortable to come back to our buildings and give their very best? That's why we are, are going to engage in those conversations, even though we started so doing some planning. And communication, once again, I'm going to be sharing my phone number very soon. And you can call me or send an email, uh, an appointment, send an email. The best thing to, to get in touch with me is text message. Because I don't answer the phone usually because I'm meeting with people. But I am going to share it with you in a few minutes. But I want to make sure that, uh, you feel confident that we are going to have an amazing school year, that our students are going to come to our schools and have fun. We want to make sure that our teachers are going to feel like, yes, we are here together, and that we are going to have the energy to educate students. Because we want to make sure that you're going to be okay too, for the people that provide support to the students, that are not teachers or with parents, our social workers. We want to make sure everybody is going to feel so happy and so eager to come back, that we are going to have an amazing school year. Uh, we do have some challenges, uh, with the after-school programs. We don't have enough people, uh, applying for those jobs. I send a notification and a letter to parents asking or caregivers to please, if you know people who want to work after school, let us know. We, uh, school department is not isoling. We are all together. So as a collective, uh, community, I'm going to be calling you and asking you for help. We need people to actually apply for the jobs. We will go through the process, but we need staff to come back and be ready on September first. And we are going to have this amazing and exciting year. I can't wait for the paper rally. Students, we were talking about the paper rally. And we were talking about prom already, because that's what the students need to hear about, wow, we can go back to the school and get some type of normalcy. So I can't wait for that year. And that's it. I'm opening for questions and any forums that you have, just to, I'm telling you, this is very hard because I would love to just say that I'm so happy you are here on a Saturday. Thank you so much for your support, and I can't wait to start this school year and see the students. So thank you.
All right. So at this point, uh, do you want to leave it here or this one? Okay. Um, at this point, we'll open up the floor for, uh, questions of the superintendent and the mayor. Um, anybody in person, feel free to, uh, come on up to the podium and we'll turn the microphone around so you can ask anybody on Zoom. Um, feel free to just use the raise hand feature, um, and you will be given the opportunity to ask a question live. Um, it does look like we have one question in chat that I'll put up on screen, um, from Saynara. It says, welcome, Lejia. We are so excited to have you as part of our MPS community. Given the fast speed of the Delta variant, is Malden considering offering a remote option until kids under 12 are able to be fully vaccinated?
Um, so the state actually, uh, in, I believe in May, we are proposal to all the districts to, uh, decide to go, uh, remote, in-person or hybrid. Uh, as a district, the decision was to go in-person. So what we can do, uh, we can, you can email us because we don't have, we don't have that option. But we would love to talk to you about what can we do to make sure that you feel safe, that, and to send the students to the schools. So we do not have the remote option, but we can talk about what can we do to support you so you can see the classroom, you can go and see the school, and feel comfortable sending these students to the school.
Uh, also, if you haven't heard, Governor Baker and Lieutenant Governor Polito, uh, I think it was just yesterday, said that is not an option from their end on doing what we did, uh, last year right now. That doesn't mean it can't change. But as of now, they're, they're really requiring everyone to be in person. Uh, the other thing I can tell you is working with the school committee, uh, we have started to look at, possibly down the road, of having a permanent hybrid option. Uh, one thing that we heard loud and clear from our students last year, that they thought, for some of them, learning remotely did work. It was a much better way of learning for them. And that has stuck with us. We are now, we are talking with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to see whether or not down the road, we could make that happen. Right now, the only option is that the department is offering is, if you're going to have a remote, I guess it's called an academy, you have to have a separate administration, separate rules, separate protocols. And I think for us, we just didn't think that made sense for our district. Uh, we thought what made sense last year was sort of, everybody was still together. They just might have been in different, um, buckets, if you will, in terms of how they learned. So we're holding out because the legislature has told us at the State House that they are strongly considering putting something in place in what we had last year.
But meantime, please send the, uh, your child to school on September first. And we can have conversations before that. We can actually open schools for tours, uh, trying to make sure that you know that your child is going to be safe. And I do understand that most of our population, uh, is underage, is in their 12 years old, so they cannot get vaccinated. Uh, that's a conversation we are having, is that's most of our schools. So we are thinking about how do we make it even really better, uh, spaces? Uh, how do we actually take extra precautions so the students and staff will be safe?
Just one other thing before we take the next question. Uh, working with, um, Lejia, uh, we are in the midst of upgrading all of our HVAC equipment across the district to the tune of about, um, $7 million. Uh, we are using the American Rescue Plan Act funding that we received just recently to do that. So that will take, uh, just about two years to do, but every unit on our roofs across the district will be replaced by them. We've got a couple hands raised, so we can go to our first participant speaker, Deborah Apprecue. Do this way, Deb. Okay, I'm going to stop share for a minute, just so we can see. And Deborah, can you unmute?
Hi. Yes, my question is, what about the mask?
So the contagiousness is increasing. As of today, uh, Desi has been highly, highly recommending that we, uh, wear masks indoors. Uh, it's a highly recommendation. Uh, we do not know if that would
Very different than the COVID that we dealt with last year here in Massachusetts, these so-called breakthroughs.
But as, uh, as of yesterday at 10 o'clock, that's, has been the latest news.
Yeah, she's right. Everything has been recommend, strongly recommend. And in our quarterly meeting that we just had with the state legislative delegation, our state senator and three representatives, the one thing that we asked them to do is if you're going to do something, do it statewide. Uh, because our experience last year, uh, in, you know, pitting ourselves against other districts around us just was not productive. So, you know, we asked them, I think they are going to urge the executive branch to do that, but, you know, we'll wait and see. In the meantime, uh, we just did have a COVID-19 update show on UMA Wednesday night, which is now being replayed on, uh, their channel. And you can also access it through the city of Malden. which is now being replayed on their channel. And you can also access it through the City of Malden YouTube channel in which we talked a lot about this topic. And so, you know, our numbers remain very, very good. We're under a 2% positivity rate. And, you know, if we had to decide today with, you know, we'd want to talk with the school committee, everybody else, we're not just there yet. But we're going to continue to talk about it. We're going to continue to monitor our numbers and what the state does. And then, as our new superintendent said, one thing she has made clear, there will be plenty of notice. So Deborah, you're not going to find out about a new requirement the day before school. We're going to make sure that there's plenty of time in whatever we're going to do moving forward.
All right. Sorry about this. Nope, Deborah's sticking around. That's fine. All right. Next for her. Do we have any in-person? We do. All right. You probably want to, and they're going to turn the mic around just so you can.
Hi Leah, my name is Kevin. I'm a family liaison at the Ferryway. So I wanted to ask, so Malden has a very diverse community. And, you know, due to COVID last year, we weren't able to schedule, you know, family events and engage our community as much. With current protocols and, you know, given from DSE, what will we be able to schedule those types of events for next year?
I missed those.
Kevin, I thank you for that question because that's what makes a community coming together and being able to have, communicate with other people and be able to be outside and experience eating food, having fun. Hopefully, with the new Monday, well, the high recommendation, wearing masks, we will revisit that. There's a person in my office, and I think she's going to be working very closely with all of you starting next week. It's going to be, what is the role of the parent liaisons in every school? And how do, instead of asking people to come to us, how do we go to them? So we might have small settings, totally safe, but we need to go back to the community. It is hard not to go to the community. So the way that we are planning to do is that we have to go to different centers and provide information or have small, small events, or we can, we have to continue engaging the community, especially the ones that are technology is not their strength, or they are working three, four jobs, is how do we go to them? I have been in conversation with our faith-based organizations. And we are going to see how do we actually can go to churches, to temples, to access families and to be able to make sure that we listen to them and engage in kind of certain activities. We do not know what it's going to look like yet, but I'm open to have an amazing year where families can come to us and we can go to them.
All right. I'm going to. All right, we're going to go to Salima.
Hello, can you guys hear me? Hi, my name is Salima and I am a parent of a an adorable, kind boy who is going to seventh grade in the first day of school. I'm also a lecturer at Boston University and the former Malden CPAC president and their current advisory board member. I would like to welcome you to the Malden Public Schools. We're very excited to have you. And I guess I, my question is around, how are we going to prioritize rebuilding relationships with students, addressing social emotional needs before addressing the learning loss once we resume back in September? Does the district have any social emotional learning curriculum that's going to be able to address that social, emotional, mental health, behavioral health and learning loss our students have experienced? And my, my second question is related to a passionate topic that I've been advocating for throughout all these years, which is the fact that our general ed and special ed work in silos. And I was wondering particularly, what is the plan to provide professional development for our educators and teachers so that they can work in the classroom, modeling and supporting inclusive best practices and providing services and modifications based on the needs of each student? So these are my questions and thank you so much.
Thank you for the questions. So let me go back to the social emotional component. We have been able to hire or we are going to hire social workers for every single school. The schools already have infrastructure to support the students, but we want to make sure that we are going to go a little bit deeper to where students and families, because no, you're the students, also families went through this hard day, difficult years. So we want to make sure that our social workers are going to be working with the students, that they're going to be able to come up with activities where the students would be able to talk. But we know that these are new members to our community. We want to make sure that the teachers, including our professional development, are going to go to some training about how do we start the conversations about that? How do we identify in the classroom where the students that don't talk are the ones that usually we don't pay attention to? How do we identify that those students also need to have a space and a time to talk? We are going to develop some activities. And once again, this is the planning that is happening. Last Thursday, we were able to talk, last Friday or Thursday, I don't even remember anymore. We met with the principals and we are meeting on Monday again, how we're going to take care of this, how we are going to be able to provide students, I'm speaking very fast, sorry, with the services that they need and also the wraparound services that the families will need in order to support our students. So yes, professional development is going to happen for the social emotional component. What is the curriculum going to look like the first two or three weeks when students come back? For some students, it's going to be new to come back to a building that they haven't been there before with a new teacher that they don't know. Because last year was a teacher that sort of they knew, they were online for years, long periods of time. But now it's going to be a new person. How do we actually make that transition possible for them? So professional development, a lot of planning, and at the same time, trying to make sure that we will have the resources for the students and their families. It's not going to be easy. And when I was talking to the students, my, what I call my advisory team, that's what I think that they were concerned, but they also say, you know, I don't think about always the sad things. Think about something that's going to be positive. We had the food truck out there. I was like, bring that to the schools. Ice cream, bring them with something, books, music, to make sure that it's a welcoming environment. Because schools should be fun. It's a place to learn, but a place also, we say, oh, my God, I feel so welcome because everybody knows my name and I'm connected to my principal, I'm connected to the family liaisons, I'm connected to the nurse, connected to teachers. And that's why we want to make sure that the first two or three weeks is going to be taking care of students as human beings. Education can come and will come, but we cannot educate if the students' minds and hearts are not actually set to learn. The other one, the pity for the teachers, and this is a topic that I love very much and a special location. Are all our students have the right to be together? It's our job as adults to provide the support for them. And that is professional development, not only for the teachers, but for professionals. I would love in the future to have the professionals become the teachers and people that work in the school to also become teachers. It is an amazing profession. Our professionals, thank you for everything that you did during COVID because I know it was hard. Teachers, thank you too. And yes, we are going to engage in conversations with teachers and professionals and other staff that took care of the students and take care of the students to see how do we get ready to create this inclusive settings? And inclusion doesn't mean just have regular ed and students with disabilities. It's what needs to happen in their intentionally practices, getting them together to socialize, to be able to spend time together, to be educated, differentiating destruction, making sure that we offer tier support. All of that has to happen in the classrooms. Because we can talk about inclusion by just saying, oh, we have students with disabilities and regular students. That's not really inclusion. Inclusion is when we are all part of the same community.
I think the superintendent might be being a little bit modest because Salima, she's not only waiting for the school year, she's been doing this all summer with our educators in the room and who may be tuning in. Just this past week, we attended four summer program celebrations. And it was just so great to hear from our families that they thought this was the beginning of helping our students recover from what happened over the past year. We had a partnership with Chinese Culture Connection yesterday and resulted in the celebration of, I think it was 30 Little Dragons. The day before that, we were at the Ferryway School where the students were raving about the support they got, not just from our teachers, but also the student interns to help them with social emotional issues. And I see Joe Levine in here, our recreation coordinator. He's been having summer programs all since school let out. And we also had our very own Malden Public Schools Summer Adventures Program just this week. These are all programs based on what we just went through that could have been put on hold or hiatus until the fall. But again, we are fortunate to be working alongside so many educators and people in our community that have already started trying to help our students come out of what we just went through.
All right, we can take a question from the audience. If anyone has one live. That's up to you guys. You can fight it out. Come on, Jackie.
Hi there. My name is Jackie Egger. I'm a Forest Hill parent, Word five. I'm also vice president of the CPAC. So yeah, CPAC's in the house. So my question to you, well, first of all, I want to say thank you for coming here. I also want to say you mentioned Joe Levine a minute ago. My son's been doing the summer and spring sports with Malden Rec. And he heard from me a lot last year because I really wanted Malden Rec to happen last fall and unfortunately could not. And I'm really, really happy to see that we're already moving forward. So thank you very much. My question is, is so, you know, this obviously was a tough year. And you're probably hearing from a lot of different people about different priorities. How are you organizing the priorities? How are you ordering them so that there's only one you, one, all of us? Like, what's the priority for what you want to work on this year?
So my priority at heart is to educate students and to make sure that they feel like they're loved and welcomed in schools. But going by the, what I'm doing is gathering information, data again, listen to different people. And when I don't listen, if I don't hear from a specific group of people that I know I have to go to, then I go to them. Because I want to make sure I am going to hear from almost every single member of the community or the representative community. So I'm gathering information. So far, these are my emerging priorities based on conversations, based on emails that people have sent. And that is instructional court. We need to have a literacy program. And so far, we are using some materials that we cannot order anymore. So that's a priority to make sure that we are going to start looking at the curriculum, resources, how we allocate resources. Everybody has different take about resources. So there's data that I'm collecting. I would be glad to present very soon when I finish my findings with data about how the priorities are going to be laid out. Even during my forums, when I was being interviewed, it was communication and transparency. That came across almost in every single forum. Students, parents, community members, and school community members too. So that is something that is a pattern that I see and that's informing my priorities. Then we have collaboration and equity. Of course, getting the school ready. Going back there, how I'm going to make sure that the priorities are the right priorities is because I'm not the only one who is actually going to make that decision. It's a team of people. I'm going to bring it to the, my administrators, my school leaders, central office. I'm going to run it by the student advisory. I'm inviting teachers to be part of that conversation, our professionals, and also going, coming back to school comedians, are we actually addressing the real issues, the priorities that we need to take care of? But the priorities that are sort of non-negotiable, that is, we had to get ready for September 1st. That is, that's, that's non-negotiable. The students will be at our doors coming, so we had to be ready for that. The other one is instructional court. We have to focus on that. Equity is a non-negotiable. We have to make sure that we are going to provide all our students and teachers with support that they need in order to access curriculum, instruction, wraparound services, and also to have fun. So that's how I'm informing my priorities. So these are called emerging priorities because they're not set yet for a strategic plan. I'm aware that there was some work done in the community with school leaders too, about a four-year strategic plan. I'm going to look at it because if people were involved and spent a lot of time in these conversations, I want to acknowledge that. I want to learn from that and reactivate those themes because it should be a community strategic plan where we all, we have a piece of the ownership of parts. So I cannot say it's going to be only mine. It's our collective one. So I would definitely would love to talk to you too and see what, what you're thinking or who you represent because you are not just standing here representing yourself. You're representing a group of people. And I am here to learn, but also to take action if possible.
Sure. So we're going to do a question from the Q and A. I've got one from Jade. Thank you for hosting this meeting. It's wonderful to virtually meet you, Leah. Considering our schools are K through eight, will be, will we be requiring masks in elementary schools regardless of vaccination status? Or will the students 12 and older be required to show proof of vaccination to allow unmasked? So I think they're, you're going to reiterate what you've already spoken about a little bit.
Yes. First of all, we cannot ask anybody if they have been vaccinated. It's against HIPAA law. And we, I, we recognize that most of our students are in grades K to eight and some of them are 11 years old and younger, so we cannot ask them to get vaccinated. As of today, as of yesterday, 10 o'clock AM, Desi and CDC highly, highly recommend for students and staff to wear masks indoors. So we will provide, we will continue with that policy. We cannot actually create our own policy. It has to be with CDC and the state. But I believe that if we want to make sure we're going to be safe, just to wear our mask and continue washing our hands, making sure that we wipe everything, making sure that we are going to keep conscious distancing and that when we engage in groups, that we are conscious about if we are sick, let's stay home. If we feel like a call is coming, let's keep it at home and feed it to you and make sure you sleep and everything. But so just following those guidelines, but I cannot, we cannot mandate anybody to wear a mask. It's highly, highly recommended, even if you are vaccinated, it would be appreciated if you also wear a mask.
The only thing I would add too, in our internal discussions, let's say that is an option that we chose. It's not state mandated, or rather, it's left the districts. One thing initially that we had trouble coming up is just the logistics of that, you know, tracking and requiring and showing. And then someone over here who is vaccinated that sees someone over here who is unvaccinated, does that then, you know, have repercussions? And so that's why we're leery of going down that road until we get guidance from above. But again, it's something that we're talking about now on a daily basis as we lead up and we'll let everyone know as we get closer to the opening of schools.
All right, we'll open it up to the audience again.
Good afternoon. Karen Cologne Hayes. First of all, thank you so much for this fantastic and for hosting this so people can ask questions. I'm going to speak to what Jackie just asked, and I will attest that you have been out in the community and asking leaders to meet with you because I did meet with you in your office and really appreciate that. A question, going back to social emotional welfare of kids, that's something that's extremely important to me. And I've been working, you know, in the schools for years on that. So I didn't hear this mentioned, but I'm sure and I'm hoping it's still continuing. The pathways program has been The pathways program has been a lifesaver. And so I just wanted to be sure that that was still in the works and that people know about. In the past, there have been, it wasn't well-publicized. Or I'm not even sure if people really knew how to get in or what the process was. And now when our kids are coming out of the pandemic, we all know the social emotional needs are going to be extreme. So happy to hear you're hiring more social workers and just wanted to see about, you know, ask about the pathways program. Thank you.
Absolutely, and I had a great time in our conversation. So I'm glad that we had the time to talk. With the pathways, so there are two different pathways. One is hosting the high school and the other one is at Linden School. And so I want to make this distinction between the two programs. The high school is for students who are a little bit off track and due to multiple things. It's grades and also social emotional components, a little bit older for the grades where they are senior. So that's the pathway at the high school. At the Linden is more for the emotional fragile students. So I'm going to speak for both of them. We have been able, and prior to my time, and I thank you for that, they approved two contracts for a specific therapy to happen in there. So there's going to be groups of people, experts coming to the two different programs because we have to customize the services that they need. And they're going to be running the program alongside the school leaders. But they're going to have their own social workers, their own therapies. They are going to have their own curriculum that will fulfill the curriculum of the school because they still, at the end of the day, they have to be educated. But they're going to have all these wraparound services that we believe is going to be, is going to make a big difference. Going back here about the metrics and accountability and data. We revised the MOU with them. And we put, what are the metrics? How do we know that what we are doing there is going to have an impact on students? We heard from some students saying, well, attendance sometimes is a measure and that doesn't work for me if it's going to be on time. Or, so we are talking about what works for students who are in that pathway, in those two pathways. And then how do we open opportunities for some students to go there for a short period of time? And then go back to the traditional classes? Or spend more time in there or needed some time here, then go back to the classrooms and go back in there. So we want to create pathways where there's opportunity for students to decide about their wellbeing, their academics. And I need a, I need time off. I need to go and spend some time in there, at least one month or two. But I have the opportunity to go back and reconnect with my other teachers. So that is, so I want to make sure that there are two pathways. We are in the process of changing the names because they serve two different populations to give. So we want to make sure that students, families, and teachers are going to be part of the, what would be the name of the two pathways to really give a sense of what they do. Because right now, when you said pathways, pathways to me actually meant something else. So in here, we want to make sure that one is for the off-track youth. And the other one is going to be for the social emotional component, and both of them had the academic component. So.
Just one other thing I want to add, while on the topic of mental health, there is no one in our city that's worked harder on this than Maria Luisa, our chief of staff. And so I'm very happy to announce to all of you that we just awarded a contract for a vendor to come in and construct the first ever student, fully serviced, student-based health center at Malden High School. So we will be cutting the ribbon to that in the fall. And this center is not just going to be a basic center where in the past it might have been physicals. They might have checked for a cold. This is going to have mental health services, dental care, social emotional issues will be worked on. It's going to run the full gamut. And, you know, we're just happy to be able to say, working with the school committee and everybody in this room, but especially Maria Luisa. We look forward to joining all of you to cut that ribbon in the fall. And that will cover Ms. Luis, eighth grade up, is it? Who can access that center? I forget the ages. Yeah, I think it's fourteen, fourteen to twenty-one. So everybody in our district will have access to it from that age group up.
And I have to say that the high school is so happy to welcome them and also the nurses in there because we want to, once again, build partnership. And we are already working and talking about how it's going to work. So all those students have access to this amazing program.
All right, we have a question in the chat. Hello and welcome from MD Lee. I am the parent of an incoming first grader at the Ferryway School. Is there any information available for the after-school program there?
Thank you for the question. And early on, I mentioned that we cannot fully staff the after-school programs yet. I sent a letter to parents letting them know that we can only run twenty-five percent of enrollment for after-school. But I would be, we send the information for any of you. If you know people who want to work after-school, please refer them to us. We are part of the community and you know a lot of people who are here. So please send us those names. As of today, we are going to be able to open that school to twenty-five percent. We are also looking into the high school students in the Malden Public School to see we can select a group of students, train them, certify them in CPR, first aid, so they will be able to also provide services in the after-school program. But we need adults supervising the program with the students. We do have amazing coordinators working very, very hard. And last night, they started to open the enrollment, but it's only twenty-five percent in our four schools. Once again, please, if you are there and you have relatives or people that you know that would like to work in the after-school, send us those names. We will try to convince them to come and work because those are the best part of the days when you had the students with all that energy and they want to engage in different things and they want to see people. So as of today, I say it's only twenty-five percent. I want to go a hundred percent, but please, please, just send us names. And we would be able to run them a hundred percent if we all work together.
All right, do we have any questions from the audience before I move back to chat? Nope, all right, so I'm going to go to our Q and A. We have a whole bunch of them. I'm going to see if I, let's start at the bottom. Oh, boy. Leanne DeRosa, "This may have been covered already as I came slightly late, but I'm wondering what the push be, push will be for teachers to learn and grow in the fight for social justice. What processes and procedures will be put into place for teachers' cultural competency and DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion competency before we dive into curriculum? Will there be accountability for doing this work throughout the year?"
Thank you for the question. So I have to thank the school committee and the mayor for actually allowing me to hire an assistant superintendent for the diversity, equity, and engagement. And we are already engaging in conversations about what equity means as a district, not just create our own definition. So we are going to engage in those conversations first with educators because we cannot talk about equity or social justice when we have different aspects or different concepts. When I make sure that we have a collaborative definition. There's going to be professional development for this. We are going to engage on our first PD. And it's going to be about how do we actually work with our own biases and also with social justice? Where do we stand? The country has gone through so many divisions, so many things that were posted on media. And social media sometimes rules our thinking, our lives, decision-making sometimes. So we want to make sure that we are going to spend time listening to educators about their own perspectives. Because whatever we teach has to be what supports students. So there's a curriculum and I have, my director just left, I guess. But we have another director in here that they are engaging in those conversations about equity, student voice. Social justice doesn't happen if we don't hear students' voice and their perspective about life. And they're, people say they are our future. No, they are our present. And therefore, I want to make sure students are going to participate in some PDs with teachers where we listen to them. We have to listen to our young people who have amazing things to say. They have a voice in our society. So yes, we will engage in professional development and a definition for the district about what is equity, social justice.
And Leanne, I want you to be ensured that the schools are not alone in this. We just hired our first ever Diversity Equity and Inclusion Officer, Bibi O'Slarishell. And she has been a great addition from all accounts. She is on all of our hiring panels. She has done training for all of our managers here at City Hall. And she's been working closely with our superintendent and others in the school department to again, support what the superintendent said is that we're all in this together. So I hope at some point, you'll have the opportunity to meet her going forward.
All right, we'll take one more from our chat. It's right above, from Rachel Gelling. "I appreciate so much what you said regarding removing the barriers to equity as well as your focus on social emotional wellbeing. We know that students cannot learn if they are functioning in their trauma brain or worried about basic needs. With that said, how important is it to you that social workers not only have a seat at the table regarding social emotional wellbeing, but are allowed and recognized as experts in this area and given the professional respect and valued as leaders for this?"
So respect is a number one rule in my life as a professional, as also individuals. And social worker are our experts. And I want to make sure that our teachers also become experts because they also have the students. I think that when we have to involve everybody in the collaborative efforts of working together, I mentioned that I want teachers, professional social workers, and also the people that work with students. Social workers, I have to say that have done an amazing job. And I hope they're taking care of themselves too because they took so much from everybody else. And when they go home, absolutely, we had to make sure that everybody's at the table. Not just by saying that we have them and check the box saying, oh, they were included. It's actually when we make decisions and when we take action, they should be part of the decision-making and the action steps. I just had to say that I would love and I want to create a district where we can actually be able to listen to each other, respect each other, push each other thinking. And I would love to have that conversation with you if I have experienced or have seen anything that happens with this division taking place. Because I'd like to unify the district. I want to unify people who are unions, not unions. We are here for the students and the students as the center of the work. We had to actually take down those barriers that we also as adults built among ourselves. So I want to make sure that we feel comfortable coming to the table and expressing our feelings so we can move the work forward.
Any questions from the audience before we move forward? Absolutely, just approach the podium and Mayor Chris, maybe you can turn that around.
Hi. So first, I just want to say thank you for creating this. And thanks for everybody else to come and show support for the community. My name is Wyler. I attended Malden High School, but I graduated. But I'm obviously still a resident of Malden. I'm currently working with my professor at Northeastern in finance alongside with about three or four other grad students and a substitute teacher, and we're gaining more people as we speak. We're working together to teach financial literacy to teens, especially at Malden High School. And I figured I'd start with Malden High and then, you know, grow to the rest of the country. So I know with COVID, you know, financial literacy, being able to manage money has been, you know, a really important topic and maybe even some, you know, maybe even controversial to some people. I feel like there's this agenda or a misconception that generational wealth is really for, you know, white people or, you know, minorities who grow up in the projects, you know, they can't go to business school or they can't learn how to manage money, invest, and become successful. And successful doesn't necessarily mean, you know, being rich. Just having that financial burden off your shoulders is very important. So my question is, how important is financial literacy to teens at Malden High School? And I understand that Malden High School currently has a finance class or of some sort. But I've spoken to recent graduates and they've told me that although the course was helpful, it wasn't enough. And so I'm sure people in this room either don't know how to manage money or at least know somebody who struggles with managing money. And so I feel like that's a really big factor on being successful. Sorry for me being nervous, this is my first town hall meeting. Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, so my first question is, how important is financial literacy to the teens? Specifically seniors who are transitioning into the real world? And my second question is, would you be willing to meet with me and maybe some other, some other members of my, my group on not, not just speaking about financial literacy, but enhancing the program?
I should clap because, oh my goodness, amazing. Yes, yes. Financial literacy is should be in seventh grade up because students are making decisions already about things. And I had to say that I have some nephews that I say, you know, what do you want for Christmas? And they send me lists with the prices and balance, everything like, oh my God, fifth grader doing this. We should have all our students being able to understand the value of what is currency? What is internet currency? And I would say electronic money because sometimes students are investing without knowing. They're just, you know, investing their time and they don't know that they should be getting compensated for that. So I do agree that every single student and in the curriculum, we should have financial literacy starting in seventh grade up. And it shouldn't be a workshop. It has to be a class that continues growing because checking and balancing, balancing your checkbook is not enough. That's not the world anymore. There's so many other currencies that exist in the world. So definitely, please send me that. And so financial literacy to me is one part of things that students should be able to do. I do believe in college. I also believe in careers. I do believe that students, and I say this in my forums and I mean it because I have done it before, we should enhance the programs in the high schools and also in middle school for students to have the opportunity to learn about the trends. And when I say that, it's not just auto mechanic because that's a very challenging sometimes for some students and that's not what they want, but in technology. So they can actually get certifications in career technical education along the way. So if I'm a ninth grader and I can get certified in CPR, first aid, that means I will be able to work in daycares, I will be able to work in summer camps. So open those opportunities for students to gain wealth, to start getting some financial entry into their lives that can support their families. The other thing is, I was talking, we were talking with the head principal of the high school and the team about, we have, again, something called pathways, but it's not the other two pathways. It's actually pathways with, in nursing. But at the end of the day, students don't get any credentials. So how do we actually make sure that the students are investing the time coming to school but they also get credentials along the way? Google Suite, how many people would love to hire somebody this summer just to be able to do that? So it's a component of multiple layers. But thank you because we want to see that our high schools and middle schools are going to give students opportunities with financial literacy, but also understanding what careers exist out there from the beginning, not to wait when they are juniors, seniors thinking about, oh, I'm going to go to college. I don't want to go to college, what careers are available when we can actually start doing that early on in seventh grade?
Let me just say, I wish I had met you many, many, many years ago because all my paper money went to the Granada Theater, Brigham's Ice Cream, and Granada Lanes. So, but I ended up, I think, reading a book one time. And I learned firsthand the importance of just putting a little bit away. And you'll be surprised on how that accumulates over the years. So I too want to join our school superintendent in offering up the opportunity for us to be together or we could do something on the city side.
All right, we've got a question in chat from Eden Garhart Smith. She says, "Welcome. I am so glad you are here. I wanted to express, and I might be alone, in the later school start times that occurred during COVID. I know it was looked at at the high school level in recent years. However, I am not aware of it being reviewed for middle school. In addition, a lot of science points to the need for sleep for older students. I'm not sure why it makes sense on the social emotional level that our older kids arrive at school before their younger peers. In terms of high school, part of the reason why I was informed it wasn't moved was because of sports and jobs. I'm not aware of middle school age students being able to work. I know you might not have an answer, but I would appreciate this topic." I know you might not have an answer, but I would appreciate this topic being revisited. Moreover, there is a giant tardy line at time back when parents could go into the building that I don't think has the end results that we want in our schools. A line being late so you can be even more late. Thank you for your time and again, welcome.
It has been part of the conversation with our wonderful, you know, president, I brought it up because students didn't do my luncheon with them. They were asking about school starting times. So we will be talking about that even though I expressed to them that there's a process and going back to learning about what happens in the external world. And that is that we don't make decisions because there's a petition. And they started a petition, decided to collect signatures at the high school. I said, it's a process and we are going to learn about the process. It's great that they're doing that, having an initiative. But at the same time, we had to make sure that they learn about the process. So we are going to invite the students to be part of the conversation about how we actually address these issues. And I also want to hear about parents because students belong to our community, belong to our family. So it would be really interesting. This year might not happen because it's a process once again, but it's a conversation that we are having with students. So parents, caregivers, please send emails. I want to hear from you because this is a collective decision. And so far, once again, for the record, we are not changing anything yet. Nothing will change, be changed this year. That's it.
And a similar type answer, Eden, is that as you acknowledged, the school committee, we were very interested in looking at that topic. And when we went to look at the survey results from Malden High School, they just weren't what we thought they would be. I'm not sure why, but I thought they came in fifty fifty or sixty forty, I forget. But it was, we were thinking it would come back seventy five, twenty five, eighty, twenty to change the start time. And when it didn't, you know, we just took a, you know, step back a little bit to regroup. But I can tell you the issue is very much alive and well, Eden, as you mentioned, prior to this. And I hope you'll all take this opportunity after the town hall's over to go down to Malden High School on the Ferry Street side where the high school class of 2022 is having a car wash until three o'clock PM for the low, low price of $5, which will help them with their activities next year. But it was interesting when I saw one of the class officers there, the very first issue, Eden, that she brought up to me after not seeing her for a couple of months was start time. So it is alive. It is well. We just have to give our superintendent the opportunity to work with her team to see how we best move forward on it.
All right, from Clarissa Isaac, will Malden offer diversity and cultural sensitivity training so teachers can better understand the backgrounds of students from different races and cultures?
Yes, yes, yes. So we do have assistance superintendent for diversity, equity and engagement. We started already the work on this for the professional development with teachers, with school leaders. And we want to also bring it to the schools with students. But yes, it's going to take place. We will be able to collect some data too about how we are doing after we go to trainings. And that would be by collecting information from students and families.
We just want to let everyone know it's 11:20. We're going to go about 10 more minutes because the ice cream's melting. So if there aren't any questions that we can answer here today, please reach out to us after. I know the superintendent is going to give you her contact information. I think everybody knows they can get me on Snapchat, Twitter, Instagram, YouTube, TikTok and Facebook. But, you know, we're serious about this, so let's go for just a few more minutes.
Absolutely. All right. So let's go to Lynn Walters. I'm not comfortable putting my kid in, in school without a mask mandate. I'm concerned that Malden has not made this decision.
Yeah, we just have to follow the recommendations from Desi. And once again, please talk to me and to see what can we do to make sure that you are feeling more comfortable to send your child to school.
And Lynn, similar, it just really started to bubble this week. So we want to make sure that we talk with all of our stakeholders first before we make a decision like that prior to school starting. So just hang in there a little bit. We're on top of it. And again, you're not going to find out, you know, the day before or the weekend before. We're going to try and give everybody as much notice as we can on this issue.
All right. Most important question of the day from Nathan Espinoza. Hi TT, it's Nathan. I love you. You say right in Nathan, right up there. All right. Anonymous attendee, is Malden going to require all staff to be vaccinated similar to the latest Fed mandates announced Friday by the president?
Once again, we cannot mandate anybody to get vaccinated and we cannot ask anybody to see if they're vaccinated. It's against HIPAA law. And unless I come from the president, we cannot. So we are not going to engage in asking anybody about being vaccinated. We just want to make sure that people are going to be cautious, wear a mask, make sure you continue washing your hands and taking care of yourselves. And if we are, if you're sick, please stay home. Just that there's nothing that we can, we cannot mandate that at any moment.
All right. Once again, if anybody live has a question, please just raise your hand or come on up to the podium. We'll take another one from Mrs. Mei Hung of the Chinese Culture Connection. Thank you for hosting this town hall meeting. You just mentioned about hiring a new team to address social emotional issues at Malden High School. Could you elaborate more about the program as to what condition or format the students can get the help they need?
Sure. So one of the things that we're going to do is a process where the principal, the social workers, the families and also the nurse, school nurse, we are going to get together to define that protocol. We want to make sure that everybody's going to have access and but we are developing the protocols. So you are more than welcome to come and I know you. Thank you for coming to me with me. So please, you can be part of that conversation, but we want to make sure that, once again, it's not going to be my decision. It's going to be a collective decision.
Yeah. And then May, just from our end, when this health center opens, just emailed Maria Luisa, our chief of staff. She has the scope of services that has been agreed to with Cambridge Health Alliance, who is going to partner with us to administer the center. So once school lets out, the center, we imagine will be open to four, five o'clock. And again, we have the list of services that will be offered and will be comprehensive.
All right, we've got one from Nikita. Welcome Superintendent Leahia. Thank you for this virtual and live town hall. I like your emphasis on communication, collaboration, families and parents. As cross-cultural and multilingual as I am, I believe black students' needs are specific and in need of special attention. Have you met with the black community stakeholders yet who can help communicate and collaborate with black families? Thank you.
Yes, I have met with students and also with a faith-based organization. So more than welcome. If you want to give me more information, I'm still gathering information. So please, if you have groups that you want me to talk to or you, more than welcome. I'm going to give you my email because I don't remember my new cell number. Unless I call my, somebody calls me. So I will give you my contact information. So it is L N O R I E G A at Malden P S dot org. So it's my last, my first initial and my last name. Oh, actually, somebody has my phone number. My, okay, thank you. All right. My cell number is seven eight one eight seven zero seven five three three. Nathan, you're not allowed to use this one. That's my nephew. Once again, it's seven eight one eight seven zero seven five three three. Text messages work great and email.
Okay, we have one from Clark. What are your thoughts on critical race theory and the sixteen nineteen project as far as the Malden Public Schools is concerned?
Thank you for your question. We do have a group of directors and us talking about that, how we are going to be able to address this issue in our schools. So if you have any ideas, input, please just send me an email because it's something that will be coming to distance. It will be part of a communication with students. But yes, definitely, please send us that information. It's part of the equity work that we're going to be doing with the PD and also with our students. So please, please send me information if there's something more specific that you want to talk about. But we have to address this issue right away with our students. And it's not, once again, it's not just me. It's a group of people that are going to be addressing our concerns and also listening to the students and the community.
Perfect timing. This is our last question of the day and it's from Conrad. Do you envision Malden setting up an institution above high school like a community college?
Let's let her get through the first year first, Conrad.
No, we can not yet, but that doesn't mean that students can not get dual certification in CTE programming to get them ready for college and career. And one thing that we welcome is the partnership with our local colleges where students can actually do internships, do explore things and also a Northeastern note because of that is because most of my siblings graduated from there. It's opportunities for students to go to shadow college students so they get the experience before they can make a big decision in their lives. Sometimes we decide to go to a college and there is like, it's not what we actually envision because we never really spent time in there. So we want to create, no, a college, we cannot do that, but it would be great. But no, we want to make sure that students get the opportunity to go and explore colleges by having somebody that they know, especially from the community, that they can guide them. So when they make the final decision, they will be able to say, well, this is the right place for me because I can see myself here instead of going to a college, spend all that money or that time and say, it's not for me. So we want to make sure that there's a connection with higher education.
All right. Unless there's a last minute question from the audience. And while he's coming up, we'll take a quick second to acknowledge there are also 100 plus participants on Zoom, including counselor Amanda Linehan and many members of the Malden Public Schools staff and administrative team. So our last question.
So I wanted to ask, so due to graduation rates now down to seventy eight percent, 10% down from two, 2018, 2019, what will graduation look like next year as well as can we smoothen the transition for eighth graders going into high school?
I think that you addressed two different issues right now. One is, but they are actually interconnected. I'm looking at the dropout rate in eighth grade to ninth grade. So that is something I want to start looking more into. The students that were disengaged during the school year, are they, how do we engage them back? And I'm talking about eighth graders who are expected to go to ninth grade. Some students have a hard time in eighth grade transitioning to online and being able to be pushed to go to high school. So we are going to find out how they're doing. So there's data, I would be glad to share that data with you about the students in eighth grade who got disengaged at some point and still were promoted. So we are also revising the promotion policy. Ninth grade, we want to see how we are going to be able to get all those eighth grade so they get ready for high school. Going back to the graduation rate, it is alarming. It is concerning. We are going to be looking at avenue by the pathways to wrap up the services for students who got disengaged during the year and were off track even before COVID. So I'm not going to say that COVID didn't cause more of this numbers to increase, but it was happening before. So we are engaging in those conversations. We are looking deeply at the, what I call off track youth. What, what do they need? What credits they need? We are going to engage in transcript audits so we know that 12 graders, what courses they need in order to be able to successfully graduate. We are going to have a summer graduation on August 5th. But we are also looking at the students that were not able or for some reason did not participate in the summer school, who are seniors and they are hard to reach. So absolutely, you, this is a conversation that I love to have because it's not just about one time event graduation. It's what happens to get the students to that point, studying in seventh grade, eighth. And the gap in eighth grade, I'm concerned too. So that's what we are looking at. And I would be glad to talk about numbers and how to get families involved and students involved in this conversation.
Look, we may want to add you to the panel next time. Good questions. And one thing that we have been already talking about is strengthening that bond from eighth to ninth grade. We've done it informally in the past. I know former Malden High School principal Dana Brown used to go down and speak with the students before they came up, but I think it was informal. I think we probably, and Leah has talked about formalizing that, where every eighth grade class is addressed in a formal, in an informal setting by, you know, our staff from the high school. The other thing I could say under Leah and our head of guidance, Erin Craven, we now have a program over the summer. I think it just concluded for a number of eighth graders who worked alongside her. We had them up here at City Hall for a tour. And that seems to also be effective, but we agree with you. That's something that Leah has told us. You know, it talked about her to do list. That's, we want to, we have to strengthen that bond between eighth and ninth grade as a priority.
All right, we have exhausted our questions, so you can, both can close us out for the morning.
Thank you so much for the families who are watching us virtually. And thank you so much for all of you that came here. It means a lot to me, I have to say, because I have never been a superintendent. So this is new for me. And I'm going to be learning because it's the way to do things by communicating with people, by asking you a lot of questions because I don't want to assume things. And you have been here for a long time. So if I tap you and said, hey, can we talk? I would love to talk. So somebody's already calling me. Yay. I won't take it at this moment. Whoever's there, I won't take it right now. But I just have to say thank you. It is an honor to work in this community and I am so blessed. First, I want to say thank you, Mom, for all your prayers, to God and to my family and to all of you because I know that I would be here for 10 years with all your support. So thank you.
And again, we just want to remind everyone, until three o'clock, you could support the Malden High School class of 2022 at their car wash at Malden High School on the Ferry Street side, only $5. I too want to join our superintendent in saying thank you for all of you being here and on Zoom. And I think it's worth noting about the guy behind us, Adam Wilder. You're doing a pretty good job or what? The only, the only negative now, we're going to put him on all our meetings. So we're going to have him do all our meetings. Again, we offer a tour of City Hall. There's another four floors above us. So if you are interested in that, please meet me out in the lobby.
I'm pushing him. Ice cream first, please. It's melting. It's melting.
Although no food in the building. So and then let me just end. I know a lot has changed over the past year, but I could tell you the one thing that has remained constant is are the Malden Public Schools. Belmont School, Lincoln Junior High School, Malden High School, it was at Malden High School. I knew I wanted to be mayor one day and the Malden Public Schools made it happen. So it is, it's where dreams are realized. So thank you all again for being here and we look forward to working with you in the new school year.
And thank you, Rosetta.